Start the meeting at seven o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting to order. And I will turn it directly over to Dr. Burnham to confirm member access.
Good evening, everybody. As a preliminary matter, this is Dr. Burnham Superintendent of Schools. I will do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chairperson Bertrand.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Archambeau.
Yes.
Secretary Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Leighton.
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro.
Yes.
And staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Our recording secretary, Ms. Susan Summers.
Yes.
Our HR and Finance Director, Mr. Michael Cassidy.
Yes.
Our Health and Safety Officer, Katie McGuire.
Yes.
And our Director of IT, Mr. Steve Melandinos.
Yes.
I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel and streaming live on Facebook at a later time. And this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. And all town facilities are currently closed to the public. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website on the COVID-19 Information Center page, accessed through the town manager's webpage, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference video conference via Zoom app, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting business ground rules. We're now turning over to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Wendy Bertrand, the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses. Once the chair has those, they will have public comments, affording each person up to three minutes with a total of 10 minutes. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So coming back to the agenda, I do not have a chair's report tonight. So we will move on to public comment for agenda items only. If anyone has any comment relating to items on our agenda tonight. Not, I am not seeing any, so we will, we will move on. We have a line item transfer, so hopefully Dr. Burnham can fill us in on that.
If I can find it. Let's see. All right, this evening, the line item transfer before you is from the primary school. This is a request to transfer from two different lines, the furniture and equipment line and the math supplies line to the computer contractual services. The amount that we're looking to transfer will allow us to rectify a deficit in the computer contractual services line. This is due to the iReady subscription and the RAS Kids subscription. This will also allow coverage of approximately $2,500 for iXL in January. So Mr. Adams was asking for the remainder of the furniture budget and the math supplies to be moved to this computer contractual services to cover these costs for this year. So the amount being moved is $7,475.86.
Any questions from the committee regarding the transfer? All right, then I will take a motion. Ms. Archambeau.
This is Carol Archambeau, and I will move that we accept the line item transfer as outlined.
Is there a second? Ms. Shapiro?
This is Sophie Shapiro, and I second that motion.
Ready for roll call?
We are ready for roll call.
Mr. Leighton.
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mrs. Archambeau.
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And we have meeting minutes before us from regular session October 21st. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to review those. Any questions? Ms. Archambeau.
I had one small edit that I forwarded. I checked, I don't think it's on there yet. So with the exception of that edit, which was just a edit, that would be fine. I just want to make sure it gets in there.
And that edit was related to your report from the Finance Committee, correct?
From Finance Committee, yes.
So I can relay to all of you that we did receive that edit. And I anticipate that it will be rectified as soon as possible. Should be a revised copy in there in the folder. You can double check tomorrow.
Alrighty.
All right, then if anyone wants to put forward a motion to accept those minutes with the edit. Ms. Kelly?
This is Laura Kelly. I moved that we, I motioned that we accept the minutes from October 21st with the edit proposed by Ms. Archambeau.
Is there a second? Mr. Leighton?
Yes, I'll second the motion.
All right, I think we're ready for a roll call.
Mr. Leighton.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro.
Yes.
Mrs. Archambeau.
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand.
Yes. We are on to the superintendent's report.
Alrighty, a few things this evening. An update on the Turkey Hill Elementary School HVAC. In lieu of a third-party inspection of the HVAC system at Turkey Hill, the district has offered and the LEA has agreed that air purifiers will be purchased for each classroom at Turkey Hill Elementary School. The purifiers will actually filter the classroom air. Those filters are on order. An update on our capacity for live streaming. The town manager agreed to use Town Cares Act grant funds to purchase the technology equipment needed to effectively teach in either a hybrid or live streaming model. The equipment has been ordered. Each teacher will have an upgraded laptop, a large monitor, docking station, microphone, and stylus tablet. All but 53 teacher laptops will be delivered by Friday this week. And we anticipate that the remaining laptops should be delivered promptly after the Thanksgiving break. Feedback surveys, the next feedback survey will be sent to families, students, and staff this Friday. Responses will be due Wednesday, November 25th before the Thanksgiving holiday. And we will review, summarize, and report those results in December. A little bit of an alert to our families. Due to the number of quarantined staff, our substitute pool has been maxed. It is possible at this point that we may not be able to staff a school on a given day and therefore would have to call for a remote day for that building. It would be much like calling a snow day. If I learn from any principal any morning that they do not have enough substitutes to staff teacher absences, I will make a call to the staff of that building and the families of that building and notify them that that day will be conducted fully remotely. So it's not a transition to a remote learning model. It's just a singular call for a remote day. If I feel that our capacity to staff the building would exceed a single day, I would make a recommendation for transition to remote for several days' time. Updates on community events. Our annual tree lighting. This year, the tradition of gathering at the gazebo on the Lower Common for the annual tree lighting will be suspended. However, the tree will be lit on Saturday, November 28th. Just no gathering on the common. In lieu of this tradition, we will substitute a new activity this year. Currently, we are in collaboration with other town departments and organizations trying to pull together a Christmas drive-through that will be held at the middle high school on Saturday, December 12th. Snow date of Saturday, December 3rd, Sunday, December 13th. We're still working out the details of what that will look like, time, etc. And more information will be forthcoming. Our Lunenburg Public Schools Administrative Assistants are organizing the third annual gift card drive this year with COVID safety precautions. We are asking that donations e-gift cards be emailed to Tina Cooney or sent into school with students. We will also be hosting a drive-up drop-off from 10 to 12 on Monday, December 7th at the middle high school, and donations will be accepted through Tuesday, December 8th. And lastly, this is our last meeting heading into the Thanksgiving break. And I just wanted to take a moment to say that I am very thankful for the families of this community. They have shown extraordinary support, encouragement, patience, understanding, and trust throughout this whole ordeal. And I am very, very grateful for that. I'm also very thankful for a phenomenal staff that continue to give their all to prepping great lessons, delivering great lessons, overcoming technology challenges in order to do so. They, they really have done a fantastic job. And I'd also like to thank all of my administrators. They have really and truly done a great job and shown tremendous leadership and support of their staffs throughout this pandemic. And lastly, I would like to say that I'm very thankful for a school committee that is so focused and dedicated to meeting the needs of our students and providing the best education we can. So thank you all very much. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I hope you have a very safe Thanksgiving holiday. We have much to be thankful for. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Burnham. And likewise, we are very thankful for you.
Thank you.
Outstanding leadership starts at the top.
Thank you.
So I don't believe, I'm going to do a quick scan, I don't believe we have a student rep with us.
Correct.
So I will move on from that report to new business. First part of new business is our end-of-the-year report.
And I'll turn this over to Mr. Cassidy.
Everyone, this is Mike Cassidy, Business Manager. And before the school committee tonight is the the annual financial report that the business office prepares in coordination with the town accountant. So this financial report goes to DESI. And it really, it documents our expenditures and our revenues from FY '20. It's, it's really a critical report for some, I'm just giving kind of an overview for some of our newer members. This information is used for various reports that the state generates. And they, they use the financials as it ties to some of the enrollment data, the SIMS data. So it's really, as far as what type of educational programs that we offer and the amount of money that we allocate to some of those, some of those areas. So they, we submit the information to them. An auditor comes in, looks at the information, make sure that all the, all the numbers are in the right cells, and then they turn it over to the data grinders at DESI, who then generates some of these reports. And so from time to time, you may hear the superintendent or myself, and maybe even a principal talk about like a radar or dart report. So a lot of that information that is generated out of those two tools that the department provides, a lot of that has to do with the financial data that is generated from this report that we prepare for submission. So it is a critical report. You know, so it does document our revenues. It documents our expenditures, and it's allocated by our function codes. And if, if an expense is general education or if it's a special education account. So you'll see that some of that information kind of divided through the report. It also allocates money that we've received from grants in certain function areas. So I provide quarterly reports to the school committee. It's basically, and that's a MUNIS report. And I basically take that information and I chop it up and we, and we, we get it to a form that we can submit it to the department. So this is an annual request that the business department or the business office brings forward to the school committee. And it's really our intent to, part of the submission of this report is to have the chairperson sign off on this. And the intent is really to sign off that, that the business office and the town accountant, who also signs off on this document, is submitting a report that is provided to the best of their ability. Once again, we are, we do have an auditor that comes in. It's for a couple of days during the wintertime to double-check our numbers. So once again, this is, this may be a new report for you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. It is a rather large document. So if you don't have any questions tonight, certainly an email or a phone call away. So I'd like to turn it over back to the chairperson for consideration and or questions.
Thank you. And I will, I'll take one more pass-through, yes. But take any questions from the committee, any comments, Ms. Archambeau?
I just had a couple of comments. One was the information on this, and I sifted through some of it, but much as well above my accounting ability. But nothing was surprising to me because Mr. Cassidy is so forthcoming with his quarterly reports and keeping us up to date on, on what's going on in the business office. So I really appreciate that. My other comment was that I would hope that once this is approved and such, we would put this on the website so that if any townspeople would like to see this, it would be available.
That sounds good. Thank you. I can do that.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee? All right, and again, as, as Mr. Cassidy pointed out, if, if you have any questions at a later date, you can certainly reach out to him. Otherwise, I would take a motion to, to accept this report. Mr. Leighton?
Make a motion to approve the end-of-the-year report as presented.
And a second? Ms. Archambeau?
This is Carol Archambeau. I will second that.
All right, then I think we are ready for a roll call vote.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Ms. Bertrand, I do have a request. It does require a
My signature.
Yeah, a real signature, not electronic one, so
Yep.
Once, I could mail it to your house with a self-addressed stuff stamped envelope, you can send it back to me.
Okay.
Okay, how's that sound?
That works.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. Then we will move on to first read of many policies. The policy subcommittee meeting and Dr. Burnham work clearly hard at work. And we have, I'll read the the sections and titles of each policy that are up for first read. Traditionally, we waive the first and second reads. They would go up on our, on our website so that the public can have a chance to view them. Dr. Burnham will let us know at our next meeting when we do the second reading if there's any comments, questions, feedback for us. The same thing when we go to our third meeting, again, you know, a lengthened opportunity for the community to, to give us any feedback. And if we do not have any, which, which we often don't, then we would, at the third meeting, actually physically read all the policies. So tonight, policy 4111.01, which is Title IX Policy Employee, 5101.01 Student Absences and Excuses, 5102 Enrollment Policy, 5105.04 School Calendar, 5201 Organization of Instruction, 5201.01 Curriculum and Instruction, 5201.02 Curriculum Adoption, 5213 Student Records, 5221 Co-Curricular and Extracurricular Programs, 5403 Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drug Use by Students Prohibited, 5801.03 Title IX Policy Students, and 5803 Complaints and Grievances.
And I will just mention that all of these policies, with the exception of Title IX, are before this body for approval eventually, because we have added recommended language from MAS-C. So all of the revisions for all of these policies are just to incorporate recommended language from MAS-C. The Title IX policy, there are two, but there's actually only one. It's the same policy, but it has to be listed in two sections of our policy. One section that applies to staff, and it also needs to be listed in the section that applies to students. So they, there are two different numbers. And the same exact language will be located in both of these places. And this language was provided to us by our school attorneys to ensure that the policy would accurately sufficiently reflect the changes in the Title IX law and to ensure that we're compliant with that law.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Ms. Archambeau?
I had questions on two of the policies. One was 5221 Co-Curricular and Extracurricular Activities. And it was, as I read it, it was talking about initiation and that there should be no hazing, obviously, in initiations. But it says that initiate, oh, now I'm going to lose where it is, hold on. It says, "No initiation shall be held for a student organization which will bring criticism to the school district to be degrading to the student," which obviously I can't argue with that. But I couldn't think of what is an initiation that goes on anyways. So I looked up what an initiation is, and and it says, when I looked for the definition, "An act of admitting someone into a secret or obscure society or group." So why do we have initiations? Can anybody come up with a example of an initiation that is used? Just curious? Sophie?
I know we have had a lot of discussions like during, like usually prior to sports seasons about stuff like that, because I'm assuming this happened like a very long time ago. I haven't even heard whisperings of it recently. But I know like the initiation and hazing is, was like a big conversation that we would have with the athletic director and all of our sports teams during school, just to ensure that there isn't like any mistreatment of anybody new to sports teams. But I don't think it actually happens. I think it's just the languages to outline that that won't be tolerated in our district. I don't know if that helps, but
Well, that's why I just don't understand why we just don't finish it with all forms of hazing and nasty and initiations are not allowed. What, I can't think of a reason for a good initiation, I guess is what my question is.
Well, it's not exactly the same, I don't think, but there is an induction
Oh, yeah.
of students into the National Honor Society. So it is an initiation of sorts, I suppose.
No, I was just curious because I couldn't think of the reason for initiation. I mean, it's not having it there, but I was, I mean, it says, you know, can't be anything degrading or anything.
I think a lot of times people have negative connotations of initiations, and they think of like fraternities and sororities. But you can have an initiation of new members to a group or organization or sport. That doesn't have to be hazing.
Well, that's fine. Well, that's fine. I was just curious because I wondered if it was necessary language. But if there is such a thing as an initiation that is not degrading or, you know, whatever, then then that should be in there. Okay, that was that.
I I was just gonna say again, this, the language that you're referring to is language that was provided by M A S C and recommended. Yeah.
Okay. I had, I had one other. And it had to do with the enrollment policy. And it was under. They talk about a child must be six years of age before September first of the year in which he or she enrolls. And then it says, initial administration admission of children to the first grade or other grades. Will involve the consideration of both chronological age and the readiness of the children to do the work of those grades. And I'm wondering who determines the readiness of a child to do the work? What what is that? What is that referring to?
So sometimes there might be. An occasion, it it doesn't happen frequently. Where a parent wants to enroll a child. May make claims that a child has completed a program, a kindergarten program somewhere else, and they're ready to. Enroll with, you know, in the first grade, et cetera. The the principal in those situations may actually do the same sort of screening. That we might do with incoming students for kindergarten, let's say, in our schools. They might also have. One of the the grade level teachers, the receiving grade, whatever grade the child would be registered for. To perhaps have a a conversation with the student. Provide some other type of simple assessment, just to assess whether or not, in fact. The child is is ready.
But there would be no circumstance where the chronological age would not be old enough. I mean, unless the child comes from another school district with it earlier. But I mean, it's, I'm just concerned that this language wouldn't allow a parent to say, well, my child's not quite old enough, but they're brilliant enough. So they need to come to school early. And this language would not permit that. I just wanted to double check. That was my question.
I think Mr. Leighton wants to.
Sure, I'm on the policy committee. So there's, there's two components to this. There's one. Where they're at the the preschool age, age four, they they can't get past the. I'm trying to think of the initial age now, but the the language that you're talking about is the the kindergarten age, or is it the first grade age?
It was first grade.
Yeah, it's the first grade age. So they can, they can come in at first grade. But prior to that, it's the kindergarten is the very first limit, the September date for that. Does that make sense?
Right, I just, I just wanted to make sure that somebody couldn't pop a child in ahead of time due to the language.
And yeah, that first section, I'd have it in front of me, but that first section takes care of that, where they can't go before that September first date. In kindergarten, but in first grade.
Dr. Brown, does that question, does that have anything to do with? Yeah, in kindergarten in Massachusetts, where kindergarten is not mandatory? So I didn't know if that played into that. Age six portion.
Right.
Is that all I can think of there? All right, if there are no further questions. Then I will take a motion to waive these first readings. Ms. Kelly?
Ms. Laura Kelly, I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of the policies brought before us this evening.
Is there a second? Ms. Shapiro?
This is Sophie Shapiro, and I second that motion.
Then I think we're, we're ready for a roll call vote.
Mrs. Archambau?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Thank you all.
And these will be posted, school committee page and the district website? Both locations or just school committee page?
Um, I think we typically. Put them on the school committee page, but we we could put a a link on the on the main page somewhere.
A link on the main page would be great. I know sometimes folks. Don't always know. We're obviously a link on the district page as well, but. But yes, a link, a link to them would be helpful from the main page. Then moving on, we're up to discussion item COVID nineteen dashboard.
So this is where I will invite. Our Health and Safety Officer, Katie McGuire, to explain our new COVID dashboard. So I'll turn it over to Katie.
Do I have screen share ability?
Yes, you do.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Let me get this started. All right, so it can is, are you able to see that?
Yes.
Okay. So. First of all, I'd like to thank P. Valley, our LMHS librarian, webmaster, and knower of all things Google for helping me put, helping me put this together. I could not have done a bit of it without her. She's amazing. The first thing she did was to make sure that it's prominently put, it's easy to find. So on any of the different school websites. It's right there in bright red. So whatever anyone happens to log on to, they can see the bright red COVID response dashboard. So this was developed. With information about COVID nineteen, the latest from the Department of Public Health, Centers for Disease Control. From the Department of Elementary, Elementary and Secondary Education, as well as as well as our Lunenburg Public Schools Protocols and Guidelines. This webpage will also provide a weekly report on COVID nineteen numbers for our district and community. Since reporting can vary very significantly from day to day. It's helpful to look at changes over a week and then look at the changes from week to week. This provides a slightly clearer picture of where the pandemic is accelerating, slowing, or maybe in fact reducing. And this weekly reporting format is typical to what DPH and Desi is doing as well. So let me show you our dashboard. So this dashboard was developed, I will update this every Friday. The first part of the dashboard has a district total case count. Then that is obviously the cumulative number of cases, and that will just be a running number. The weekly case count, the number of positive cases for that week. Our quarantine number within the district, so the total number of students currently or staff members currently in quarantine for exposure to a person positive for COVID nineteen. They were close contact. And that it's important to understand that that quarantine number. Is students and staff that may be in quarantine due to exposures outside of school. This is not an exposure that necessarily took place within the schools. I wanted to provide a little bit of context and reference to this as well. So I wanted, I added the town total case count for that week. This is based on that weekly DPH report. And also the. The fourteen day case count for the town. And the last box, sorry, I've got the, I'll close a window here. I can't see it. So the last is the average daily incident rate. So this is the average daily incident rate per one hundred thousand for the last fourteen days as reported by the Mass DPH Weekly COVID nineteen Update. So that's the, this is that state map with the colors, with the stoplight colors. So just a quick note about the transmission with the case count. So when a case is called into the nurse, that the nurses will gather that as much information as possible. To try to figure out where this transmission may have occurred. And we're, so we're looking for, is this possibly a household transmission or a community transmission? Church, dance programs, sports activities that take place in the community? Hockey, deck hockey, things like that. These are some of the things that, you know, we've been hearing about within our community, where this transmission is taking place. So we're getting that information. And so when you see those district total case counts. There are students, staff within the district who have tested positive, but this transmission likely has occurred out in the community. Let me see. So there's information about the dashboard key. The rest of the website has information, our district protocols, lot of information from DPH, from CDC. I added for coming up, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health Recommendation about hosting Thanksgiving. So we're going to continue to add to this website so that there's lots of current information. And let's see if I can go back. There we go. And regarding isolation and quarantine, I already have something new to add to it to update. This afternoon, they changed the guidelines for quarantine. We could possibly have people come out of quarantine at ten, day ten, instead of day fourteen. If they have no symptoms, we have a PCR test drawn at day eight and the test is negative. And they continue to monitor for until day fourteen. So things are changing rapidly. And but this is a good, hopefully, this will be a good change that we can actually get staff and students back into the building. Please, but a bit sooner than the full fourteen day quarantine. So I'll be changing that on the website very soon. And I think that's it.
Quest, are you open to questions?
Absolutely.
Does anyone have, any committee members have any questions? Ms. Shapiro?
Um, not a question, but a comment. Just, that's wonderful, and that's great information to have and so easily accessible. Thank you for putting that together.
You're welcome. Thank Pam, thank Mrs. Valley.
I I did have one question. So around that ten days versus fourteen days. No symptoms, PCR test at day eight. Then if that comes back negative by day ten, they'd be able to come back versus waiting to day fourteen. I just want to make sure I processed that.
Yep, that's correct. It came out today and it said it was effective immediately. I just got this at like three o'clock this afternoon, so.
Excellent. Thank you. That that'll be great.
It will help. Yes, definitely.
Well, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
We appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Really?
Yes. So at the moment, we're going to move on to old business, to our primary and elementary Comcast update.
And now I would like to invite Mr. Malandrinos to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me, Steve Malandrinos, the IT Director. To follow up on our discussion from several weeks ago. We've been closely monitoring the primary school in Turkey Hill and have had several incidents at the primary school. Where the internet either completely failed or was so slow that it was basically unusable. We have installed a new internet router there that we were able to purchase with CARES funds. It should prevent any further complete failures. The failure was really due to. The volume of information trying to flow through that router, even though the router was capable, the speed, the information was coming through was just too much for it. The processor was maxing out. So the new router is a little more capable of handling those high traffic situations. But that doesn't solve the bandwidth problem. We're currently unable to livestream from either of those buildings in any significant way. And as the superintendent mentioned early in the meeting, we do now have equipment rolling in that we've actually been deploying as well as it comes. So in the next couple of weeks, maybe three weeks at the most, we will be probably able to livestream from all buildings equipment wise. The only barrier will then be the primary school in Turkey Hill will not have the bandwidth capable to do that. We've had a couple of instances where they were trying to use a new iReady assessment tool. Everybody jumped on at the same time to fire up that tool. And it basically caused the complete failure of the primary internet connection, and they were unable to complete that assessment. So I have to follow up on the discussion about e-rate funding. I applied for the e-rate funding. It's a, it's not a really an approval process. It's more of a, you get your application in in the proper window and the funding is available. So I did apply. We were, we received our. Confirmation, I guess I'll call it, that the application is all set and funding is available starting in January, if we decide to move forward with that. So that's basically all I have right now. I just wanted to make the board aware that we're really struggling at Turkey Hill and Primary. And my recommendation is to move forward with this upgrade if at all possible. I'm happy to entertain any questions about that.
This upgrade really is necessary even just to stay in the current model that we're in and to use. Assessment tools that are necessary for us to gauge where students are, if they're making progress and growth. The upgrade really is necessary, not just for live streaming. Although you see the numbers we have in terms of folks in quarantine. And when students are out in quarantine for ten, fourteen days. They still need to access their learning. So if the buildings could. Benefit from this upgrade, students would be able to livestream in. And out from from the classroom and stay connected during their quarantine period. So it it really is, it's important even just to maintain the current model. Of teaching and learning.
So what action would that require on our part?
I think that, you know, we would just like for the committee to vote and give us the go ahead. Because now we have to move on getting Comcast in to do the work of providing the the broadband to the two buildings.
That. If there are no other questions from the committee, then. Any discussion? From the committee about this, or do we want to put forward? A motion to initiate this upgrade? Funds, we had, we had discussed this like so over a month ago, yes? In our meeting, so. We had discussion on funding at that time. All right, then. If there is a motion out there. Mr. Leighton?
I'll make a motion to initiate the upgrade for Turkey Hill and Primary access. As presented.
Is there a second? Ms. Archambau?
I will second that.
I think we're ready for that roll call vote.
Hey, Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Archambau?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Will we be able to get at our December second meeting? An update at some point as to where this, where we are, even if it's just that, you know, we're scheduled with Comcast, things like that?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Malandrinos.
Thank you, everyone.
School, actually, we're going to skip over the school calendar item. And. Move into public comment. So public comment on anything that the school committee governs. I'm looking up. Looking for hands raised.
Uh, Mrs. LeBlanc is looking to make.
Sorry, of course, as I'm scrolling the wrong way. Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc.
Sorry, I think I clapped instead of raising a hand. We do, we do, we do Google meets at school, everybody. We don't do the Zoom. So I can also throw you a heart or a crying face emoji there. Hi, everybody. My name is. So I can also throw you a heart or a crying face emoji there. Hi, everybody. Uh, my name is Lisa LeBlanc and I am the president of the Lunenburg Education Association. I just wanted to share, um, a few minutes worth of things about how things are going for your teachers. Um, after completing our first quarter of the school year. Um, so to acknowledge the obvious, this is not how we prefer to educate our students. Um, our classrooms look very different than what we're used to with masked students sitting six feet apart. But we are committed to the necessary safety measures. While we always have the health and safety of our students in mind while we teach, we have never had to focus on that health and safety of our students, of ourselves and of our community as we do now. Despite the challenges that we faced this year to educate through a pandemic, we are extremely proud of the work that we've done and continue to do. We've discovered new online simulations for things that we've always done in person. We've learned to try new ways of engaging and accessing student knowledge on virtual platforms. We've gotten kids interested in using paper and pencils again as a break from their increased computer time. And our students are connecting with their teachers. They are helpful and they are supportive to each other. And for this, we are so very proud. We are thankful to the district for the important purchases of new technology. This will enhance the work that educators are doing and the opportunities for our students. Hopefully it will help to alleviate some of the stress and frustration that educators are feeling as they reinvent the curriculum that they have spent years improving on. Stress and frustration is certainly something that I'm sure everyone can relate to. Parents have had to change nearly everything about how they do what they do as well. And the vast majority of our staff are parents as well, so they know exactly how difficult it is. Uh, they worry for the safety and health of their own children as they send them off to school and for their families and that they will stay physically and mentally healthy. They manage online and in-person learning while working themselves and hope to enjoy that half an hour of rest before they pass out from exhaustion. Many of our educators also care for aging parents and balance their helping with concerns about exposure. If there were a few things that we could ask of our students and parents, it's to please engage with your teachers. Ask for help and participate in the learning that we have spent so much time on. Reach out if work is overwhelming, but don't give up. There is nothing quite like the sadness of an educator who spent two hours creating something that only four students complete. We can't say that our educators, I can't say that our educators are thriving, but our educators are surviving. Uh, we take little victories these days as most humans do. Um, for example, I only cried twice today. Little victories. Um, what can I say about, um, without a doubt, I can say about our educators in Lunenburg. They are working extraordinarily long hours into the night and through their weekends with outbreaks to recuperate. We are doing this because we love our jobs and we're passionate about the profession of teaching. Educators are doing all that they're doing to prepare educational activities and deliver curriculum in most of us in two mediums at once, while handling legitimate fears for health and safety as cases of COVID rise all around us. We appreciate the support we've received. We ask for continued support and patience as we handle and adapt to the myriad of unexpected circumstances that arise. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other public comments? All right, I am, I am not seeing any.
I'll just offer one more time how grateful I am for the work our teachers are doing. They've demonstrated extraordinary commitment.
Yes. Thank you, thank you, thank you. In a, in a week of giving thanks, there's, and at moments where it doesn't feel like there's, you know, a lot to be thankful for in the crazy year we've had, there, there certainly is. And thank you for that impassioned update. It was. It, it gave information and insight and just, it also shows your level of care and commitment for, for your colleagues.
Thank you. I just, we, we do appreciate, um, how difficult this is for everybody. You know, that's, it's really, I, I mean, how many times can someone say it's unprecedented, right? Where they, it's unprecedented. Um, no, this is, we're, we're trying to make things, uh, you know, team together really, um, to get through all of this. And we, uh, we do appreciate the thank yous. Maybe other times just a thank you would be small, but they, they really mean a lot um, this year. So I appreciate, um, all of you. Thanks so much.
Thank you. There is no further public comment. We'll move on to reports. Athletic advisory, Mr. Leighton?
Yes, uh, we met on Monday, the 16th. Uh, it's kind of the last time we can meet before the holiday and then winter sports typically start after Thanksgiving. Uh, this year, the, the league is starting December 14th. Uh, we did have an approval of a fundraiser for a basketball fundraiser, uh, to sell calendars. They're gonna do COVID restrictions and be safe about it. There hasn't been any announcements of cancellations of, uh, winter sports at this time. They did cancel playoffs, uh, but that, that was the same with the fall as well. We do plan to meet, uh, February 1st is our next meeting before the, the special spring. Uh, there's a special spring season where they have competitive cheer and football. And then, uh, we'll also be meeting on April 5th before the, the actual spring season, which starts on April 26th, tentatively.
Mr. Leighton, a quick question. Um, has the MIA made a ruling on winter sports?
They haven't. The only thing they did was they canceled the, the playoffs, but that was typical from the fall and a lot of, um, leagues are doing pod playoffs too, where there's playoffs within their, their little mini pod. Yeah, we're still, still waiting on any announcements. We'll see if anything happens.
Finance committee.
Uh, the finance committee met on the 12th of November. Uh, though the first half of the meeting was very difficult to hear through nobody's fault. There was some kind of, um, technical glitch. So, um, I, I did glean, they were discussing the town, um, meeting articles, special town meeting was of course last night. Um, there was much discussion around the 2% increase in sal, in, um, cost of living for fire and clerical, uh, groups. And it was pointed out that that is, um, an inequity when looked at what our school department increases were. So, um, that was just pointed out. There was also some discussion around, um, the tip agreement. That was a lot of discussion. I'm sure that was settled last evening. Um, the town manager report reflected, um, what Superintendent Burnham told us earlier about the, um, the funding for the additional laptops and other things to aid with the remote learning um, for the school out of the CARES account. And they said that they would possibly be unspent CARES account money on the town side, um, by December 31st. And the Parks Department is beginning discussion for the renovation of Marshall Park. So, um, and their next meeting was the special town meeting last night. And that's what I have.
Thank you. Policy Subcommittee.
Um, we last met on Monday, November 9th, and as you can see with the many policies brought before us this evening, we're continuing to discuss and add policies and we are going to meet again this upcoming Monday, November 3rd.
Thank you. PTO?
Um, PTO met on Monday, November 9th. Um, they gave out stickers at trunk retreat. That went well, they thought. Um, their cookie fundraiser is wrapping up. The deliveries will be coming in soon. Uh, Mrs. Whipple is organizing an online book fair for Turkey Hill that's going to take place November 23rd to December 4th. Um, she's considering expanding to other schools, but they might use this one as a trial before they expand that. Um, and the books will be in before the holidays, so they will be good for gifts. Um, PTO executive board elections are going to take place virtually at their next meeting on December 14th. Um, normally the terms are January to June, but because of the pandemic, um, they decided to extend the current executive board up until now. Um, there are no prerequisites for any of the positions besides president and they really encourage people to run. So, um, reach out to anyone on the PTO with any questions and they would love to see you at the next meeting.
Thank you. School councils, the primary school.
Uh, the primary school met this past Monday, November 16th. Uh, we continue to speak about the continuing school improvement plan. We got to hear how the students are learning about healthy choices, focusing on healthy food choices and also hand washing and mask wearing. Um, our teachers for each grade level, uh, reported in what each grade is doing, which is honestly my favorite part of this meeting because it's a wonderful reminder that the kids are in the building and they're happily bonding and learning with their classmates and it's just lovely. Um, the preschoolers were doing feathers, writing what they're thankful for, both at school and also incorporating that with their families at home and getting to bring them back in and share with their classmates. Um, kindergarten was working on cranberries and breaking them open and looking at them with magnifying glasses. First grade were working on creating videos for parents and each of them focusing on different topics. Um, second grade is focusing not only on Thanksgiving, but also working on consistency in grading through the Google Classroom. Um, they're also working on projecting expectations in the cafeteria where they're promoting being respectful, being responsible and being safe. And when the students of each class reach 20 boxes, they can get a reward where it's either extra five minutes at recess or they can vote on a reward as a class. Uh, Mr. Adams was extremely happy with the participation and the results of the pumpkin carving competition and how the children were able to relate their pumpkin choice to literacy and what character they focused on. And he's hoping to do projects like that in the future where he may try and incorporate math as a, a next lesson for the kids. Um, all staff has submitted their budget sheets to Central Office for the FY 21 budget. And all staff at the primary school will now have a second monitor and a sub dock to plug in devices. They're also going to have a speaker and a graphic pad so they can draw on their laptop for grading or feedback. And, um, new document cameras and two more projectors have also been ordered and we are hopeful that all this will be in by December 30th.
Wow. Busy at the primary school. That's awesome.
Yes, it's great. See everywhere.
Yeah. Turkey Hill.
Yes, uh, we also met on Monday. Uh, we talked about how the, the staffing, uh, is at the limits and it's, it's getting scary now where we're not having a lot of room for, for error if people are out, that they may have to shut down if, if they don't have the staffing. Um, we also talked about the, the reading levels, uh, diagnostics results and the math as well. Uh, talking about where we can kind of try to improve those scores, whether they're intervention blocks, um, breakout rooms, remote days. We also talked, oh, and also giving, uh, parents that information too, finding a way to get the parents that information too about the reading levels and math levels, the diagnostic results, so they can help out as well at home. They talked about the Turkey Trot 2020 is going to be virtual. And they'll, it'll be November 21st to the 30th. They'll be doing a canned food drive as well. And you can send in your pictures and they'll post them on the website on a slideshow. Uh, they said there would be no penny drive this year. And the parent teacher conferences, there was, uh, mixed results, um, mixed feedback. Teachers liked it and there was better attendance, they thought. Uh, parents did have some issues with internet and connections, but they understood that it, it's what we gotta do this year. That was it.
Thank you. Middle school.
Uh, the middle school is meeting on November 30th.
Excellent. And high school?
Uh, the high school has not met.
And capital planning, capital planning let, um, met last Tuesday and had a presentation from the schools. Um, so, um, the capital items that Mr. Wanda presented at our last meeting were then, uh, presented at that meeting. Um, capital planning committee is just, uh, looking at, at all the projects from all the different town departments. So we'll be spending our next handful of meetings hearing, uh, about all of those. Uh, next Tuesday, the 24th, whatever, next Tuesday. No. There, I don't even know what next day.
Whatever.
We're meeting. Huh?
It is the 24th next Tuesday.
24th, okay. Thank you. 23, 20. Um, wellness advisory.
Um, I still have yet to hear anything from wellness advisory, but I'm going to be reaching out to, um, the nurses at the buildings to see if they're planning on meeting.
Thank you. Paccel.
Uh, Paccel met on November 5th. I was unable to attend, uh, but they did forward me the, uh, minutes. And they were talking about, um, they were reviewing how to determine if COVID compensatory services are needed for children. So, um, exactly what that, I mean, I can surmise what that means, but I, not being at the meeting, do not know exactly, but, um, there are obviously services that will help some children during this time of, of remote learning and hybrid learning and, and that's what they were talking about. Also, um, Ms. Hyde addressed the iReady program for K to five and their next meeting will be January 7th.
Thank you. TC Passios Design Committee.
Yes, uh, so last meeting, I had told you that we had approved the schematic design. So we presented it or our chair, Greg Roy, presented at the, the town meeting. Uh, I thought that went well, uh, and hopefully we'll be sharing that information on the town website of the schematic design. Our next plans now are to get into more of the design specifics and the design development phase where we're getting into a lot more of the specifics and details. Uh, and then getting a cost estimate too, that hopefully we could bring to the, the Springtown meeting. And the next meeting we have is on the 30th.
And lifelong learning advisory has not met since our last meeting. And, uh, family topics for future discussion. Does anyone have a topic, Mr. Leighton?
Yes, just, uh, talking about sports earlier today, uh, with the athletic advisory. I was just thinking how we approve the, uh, the fall sports. I think it might be time that we have to put that on the agenda for the winter sports. Um, just looking at the timeline, our next meeting's December 2nd, then we have the, the 16th. The fall sport, the winter sports are planned to start on the 14th, so we should have that discussion on the 2nd. Um, and hopefully we could have even the athletic director attend as well.
So he, he was slated to come to the December 16th meeting, uh, with an update and a report on, um, the winter athletics and numbers of students participating. Um, I would imagine that by the, the December 2nd meeting, we would have heard something from MIAA as to, what their recommendation is for the winter, um, the winter season. Um, so I'm sure I'll have an update from, from, uh, AD Bunnel for that meeting.
Okay.
Would we need an action item on that agenda for the second?
Um, I don't believe so. Um, we don't typically approve, uh, seasons, um, for, for play. The only, um, it, it, it's really more to update on numbers and if, um, there are waivers for eighth grades, let's say, to participate. Um, the number of waivers and, um, the reason why they would be necessary. And I'm, you know, I'm thinking, the, the only thing that I think, um, we may want to consider for action is if the league, if all the members of the we may want to consider for action is if the league, if all the members of the league decide that they're deferring winter sports until that intermediate sports season that we're putting in early, early spring. So that might be something that we, we may need to bring forward to have folks approve.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We've come to that time. I will take a motion to adjourn. Scott, Ms. Shapiro?
This is Sophie Shapiro and I motioned to adjourn at eight ten PM.
There's a second. Ms. Kelly?
Ms. Laura Kelly, I'll second that motion.
I think we're ready for roll call vote.
Hey, Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving. Yes, Mr. Cassidy, Mrs. Scott, Miss, Miss LeBlanc. Mr. Santry, I saw you there too. Have a great Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy holiday. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.